And then I'm going to start our live feed to Facebook. So give me just about 30 seconds. Okay, we are live on the village's Facebook page now. And I will now share my screen with preview panel and get our meeting started. Okay, can everybody see this slide? Yep, okay, good. So, welcome everyone. My name is Todd Schmidt. I'm the Wannakee Village Administrator. I'm just going to go through a few logistics regarding our meeting. And here we go. So for the public who are attending and observing the meeting tonight, just so you know, you are muted. I can unmute you as the meeting host when that time comes. And we do have a public comment section included on the agenda. So last, at the last board meeting, they approved a new approach to the public comments. So you can comment, the members of the public can comment on items, whether they're an item on the agenda or not on the agenda. Two minutes per attendee. And for those attending, there's a little raise hand button. If you're participating in the Zoom software or the app, click that if you care to comment when that public comment section arrives on the agenda. And then I'll let you guys in. If anybody is participating by phone, you can raise your hand by phone by pressing star nine. So. And for the board members and presenters who are here. The all are muted automatically. Nyla, you get a free pass again. You and you and that darn mute button really gives you some problems, but that's okay. But remain muted, but keep your video active to the board members. So Chris can see you if you raise your hand or or anything. And then except for the board members, everybody else, please remain muted, both your video and your audio unless you're participating on agenda items. And then when the board discussion occurs, I think Chris is going to go with the plan to have the board members raise your hand like this. If there's an item that you want to make a comment on before motions are made. And then all votes though will be taken by roll call. So make sure you unmute when that comes up. So with that, I'll turn it over to the village president, Chris Zellner.
I'm going to call the village board meeting for July 20th, 2020 to order roll call, please.
Nyla Frye, here, Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Bill Rannum.
Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Chris Zellner.
Here. Okay, first item we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability. Caitlin.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published on the July 16th Wannakee Tribune, the final agenda. And packet was posted online on July 16th, and the final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on July 16th.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. Next, we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled? And a motion.
Um, point, we need to pull number four. It's not ready for approval.
Okay, so items one, two, three, and five. Maybe like to comment or make a motion or what like something pulled or make a motion. Nyla.
I move to approve items number one, two, three, and five on the consent agenda.
By Nyla Frye, second by Gary Hertzberg. Any comments, please raise your hand. Otherwise, call the question.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Bill Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item is our public comment section. As Todd mentioned, we changed this, I believe it's one meeting ago, maybe two. And you have two minutes. If you'd like to make a comment on an item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda. The only thing you need to make sure or make sure that people realize is that the board members will not communicate back to you during the the public comment section. If it's an item that's on the agenda, we may come back to what your points were at that time. So Todd, do we have anybody who would like to make a public comment?
Yep, Mary Heimbecker, I'll bring her in now. Okay, Mary, if you can unmute.
Hi, my name is Mary Heimbecker, 306 West Third Street, Wannakee. I seen on the Facebook Wannakee Can We Talk page that the fall garage sale days is canceled. And a few people were wondering if that means that the fall garbage pickup is going to be canceled or not. And I'm just asking that perhaps you can put some information out as to whether that will or will not happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Yeah, you're you're right. That garage sale weekend did change. And I also saw the question about the the pickup, special pickup collection. It is still scheduled to be held. Let me bring up on the villages website, we just reposted the information about that. And I can read you that real quick if I find it. There we go. So on the village's Facebook page, we just posted that it's postponed to September. Let's see, is there a date? On Monday, September 28th. All material must be out to the curb by seven, beginning Monday, September 28th, on your normal pickup day. So the details are up there along with a flyer that indicates the types of materials that are accepted. I also posted that, cross posted that to to the Facebook page where the questions were asked. Thanks, Mary.
Okay, any others, Todd?
Yes, I'll bring in Victor. Okay, Victor, if you unmute, you can speak.
Okay, thank you. My name is Victor Villa-Cres. And I'm with Hubby Properties. We're the owners of Village Crossing. And I just wanted to tell the village board that we are in support of the Lone Girl Brewing Company's plans to expand their outside seating capacity. And I think that's on the agenda tonight. I don't know if that made the consent agenda or not. I apologize for not knowing that. But that's that's where we are and we are excited that, you know, they can expand their seating capacity. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Victor. It is it is upcoming on the agenda still. And I do believe we got a written notification from Hubby Properties as well.
Yeah, that's correct. I sent that earlier today.
Yep, I'm great. Thanks, Victor.
Okay, thank you.
Any others, Todd?
Not at the moment. If you want to give it a few seconds, we'll see. No additional hands yet, Chris.
Okay, then we'll move on to our agenda. First item we have under license of permits, discuss and take action on request from Lone Girl Brewing Company for a temporary amendment to their outdoor premise. Who's introducing? Caitlin, go ahead.
So if you all remember back to your July 6 meeting, the village board approved a resolution that allows for the temporary outdoor dining, sales, and displays during our local state of emergency. We did tell you guys last week that if this, if a premise wanted to amend their outdoor dining and include the serving of alcohol beverages in that area, it would need to come back to the village board as required by state statute. We received a application from the Lone Girl Brewing Company on Tuesday, July 7th, requesting to amend their outdoor premise temporarily. So attached the memo in your packet was their application, a map of the space they're looking to add, pictures of the area they're looking to add. We also asked Lone Girls to provide some sort of indication from Hubby Properties that they are supportive of this request, which you heard during public comment and you also received as an email. So they are, the additional spaces were outlined in your packet. I can go through those if there's questions. They request the sidewalks and driveways would be used for limited delivery of food and alcohol areas. The applicant is on the call as well, so we can, he can explain this as well. If you remember back to the resolution we approved last meeting, there are some areas that we need to discuss about this request from Lone Girl. The resolution does not allow the installation of temporary lighting or the use of amplified music. And the operating hours in the resolution were from 7:00 AM to dusk. This applicant is asking for the installation of temporary lighting in some of the temporary dining areas. They are asking for amplified background music in the temporary seating areas. And then operating hours of the temporary space, they want it to be consistent with the current approved rooftop dining areas. So we recommend a staff that you guys discuss this request. I know the applicant is on the call, so we can turn it over to Kevin as well. If that's okay with the chair to have him give a brief presentation of this as well.
Sure, as Kevin's there, let's let's have Kevin. First off, I hope you're doing well and that's your business. We understand that this is difficult times for all of our businesses. So share with us what you'd like to do here and any other information that Caitlin may have missed, or maybe if she didn't state something properly, which I'm sure she did, but we'll give her that, give her that.
Thank you for taking the time today. Yes, it's an interesting time for sure. And we're on a daily basis trying to come up with new ideas to keep revenue up and work with a budget that sees us get into 2021. This is definitely one of the items that we think will help with that. So what we're proposing to do is to be able to have some more outdoor space. If you're looking at your diagram, and for those that aren't overwhelmingly familiar with blueprints, we're talking about kind of the sidewalk and grassy areas. As you approach the main doors from the parking lot, there's also a stall or two there that generally gets used by my truck to park, or I now have a trailer there because we're bringing a lot of beer over to Carbon Four for we bring over kegs there and then they can beer. So we're canning a lot more beer than we used to. Again, just kind of a new thought process and line of revenue with the current times. This area also includes the driveway. I'll explain all of these areas a little further. Includes the sidewalk that leads to an area further on the east side where you see a kind of a larger rectangle there. That's got a tent put over it. The tent's already there. I had Wannakee Rental put it up just in case this was going to go well. I had an agreement with him that it would come down if we couldn't. But but anyway, over there, we could have some picnic tables and bar height tables. Walking through those spaces kind of last to first, that rectangular area that's that's off of the southern end of the old Coltes Lumber Building, the the original building for this complex, that's could be an area that we could move some of our events to that have been canceled. Fortunately slash unfortunately, we created a really nice event space. We had a lot of a lot of weddings booked for this summer, different corporate events. Clearly, most of them have been canceled to this point. Having this area even out there with 25 people gives us some ability to still host some of a private event for some folks that are looking to do a birthday party or graduation party. Rehearsal dinners are still in in that realm of numbers of people that want to come and visit. And then again, working backward towards the building from there, heading west, there's this.
Kevin, this is Todd. I've got I've got the image up on the screen. So just tell me what you want me to point out and I'll try to.
Yeah, so your hand was around that square, that rectangular area we're talking about. That would have a tent and and some tables and chairs inside of it. We're looking at picnic benches. We have these barrel barrel tables that we had constructed. So again, primarily, we do have some requests still for downsized weddings, rehearsal dinners. Those are the two main requests that we have at this point. But that, you know, in addition to some some overflow seating, clearly, we can still have 50 people based on our occupancy on our main level. But I can tell you that you can count on two hands how many tables we've had downstairs there in the last two weeks. People are equating outdoor dining to being more safe. And so we're, a lot of this is trying to maximize what we can do in the outdoors here in Wisconsin until things start to to get cool in the fall. Todd, if you use your cursor and you just kind of go back towards the building towards the west there, yep, there's that sidewalk. So that sidewalk will not have any seats on it. That is literally being requested as a portion of this expansion so that we can legally deliver alcoholic beverages to the people that would be over in the in the tented area by the Coltes Building. If you want to move your cursor, kind of go north, south with through the driveway there, Todd. Yep, right through there. So again, it legitimatizes and takes a gray area out of our ability for people to come and pick up curbside. When all of this went upside down a couple of months ago, we built a pretty good curbside business to the point that I had to meet with the police and come up with a a better plan to not have cars out in the street disrupting traffic. So but in in order for us to to continue, not only to sell food through through that back door there and through that driveway, but also be able to include six packs of beer and things of that nature, growlers that we sell, which are a growler for those that don't know is a 64 ounce container of beer that we fill fresh off of our taps. The six packs and the growlers are pretty common for people to order. Our current premise ends like right at our sidewalk. So again, that that becomes the gray area like once I once I hand it to the customer, there's it's right on the line of the edge, right on the edge of the line, pardon me, of what we're we're legally able to serve to people that don't want to get out of their cars. Todd, you're in a good spot with your hand there. There's those two spots, parking stalls that are just off to the left of where you are. Yep. So again, there's two stalls there that if we put up, we've agreed it'd be a good idea to throw a barrier up to separate cars from a couple of tables that might be able to sit there. It you probably have a total of about four different tables that would sit in that spot. If it were to work out well there. If you want to head a little bit more to your south there, now we're now we're looking at a grassy area and a about a 10 foot wide sidewalk that leads to our back door. We'd like to put a couple of picnic tables there, a couple of Adirondack chairs. This is more along the lines of people that are waiting to be upstairs on our roof deck, which is clearly the the main spot people want to be. We're very happy and lucky to have that to the extent that we that we do. But we've, again, with lots of changing regulations and trying to adhere to not only the changes, but you know, adhere to the regulations to the best of our ability. We've gone from a company that was, you know, kind of built on no reservations, come and wait and have a nice waiting area and grab a drink or two while your table was ready. That's all gone at this point, right? Like it's it's the opposite. We take reservations for groups of two, three, four, six, whatever it might be in order to control the flow and not have people standing in line waiting to get up to the rooftop. So keeping people in seats, keeping people in seats at tables allows us the ability to to serve them a beverage, a drink, whatever that might be while they're waiting for their table. And that's really the extent of what we're looking to do. It's just trying to capitalize on what we can do with with current regulations.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Board members, questions, comments in regards to this? And please raise your hand if you haven't. Phil, I'll go with you first.
Yes, I was, I looked at over Thursday night. I think it's very doable. I would suggest, so I see on your application, you said from 7:21 to 9:720. I think I might be inclined to recommend you extend that all the way through October. Because we have, we have some good weather right through October here. So cutting it off on 9:70, I think would be spoiling it a little bit for yourself.
Yeah.
I can touch on that. Um, Phil, the the regulation or we passed a resolution last last meeting that goes through the end of the emergency order. And right now, the current emergency order is till that September 7th date. If the emergency orders extended, it would also automatically extend this for Kevin as well.
Thank you.
Nyla.
One thing that I'm thinking about is are the residents that live in that area. Many of those older homes may not have central air because of the heating systems they have. I wonder extending the hours that they can be open and putting music and lighting out there is going to make an uncomfortable situation for some of the residents. That's one of my things I'm thinking about. And then also, when viewing what other communities have done, some of them have based being having the seating outside based somewhat on a percentage of the sales needs to be from food sales. And one of my concerns is controlling the crowd. And I I'm also wondering about asking that people be seated when drinking so that they're more likely eating there to eat and of course, have a few drinks, but they aren't there just to congregate and you know, perhaps past COVID rather than doing what the intention of the outside seating is.
So I can touch on a couple of those things. Music, just to be clear, we would not do any live music outside. What we're proposing would be, I think, by our sidewalk area, that's at our back door, I could probably hook up one speaker that would be attached to our our speakers and the source of the the music coming from our rooftop, right? So that would just be connected there. That's already under regulations to be off at a certain time, be held underneath a certain decibel level and those things. On the far side, where we talked about that tent being and maybe hosting an event or two, I would really just like to have a portable Bluetooth speaker that we could just have some sort of background music, right? It's it's putting lipstick on a pig in some capacity. You know, you're asking people to come and have their wedding in a non rented space in a parking lot, but anything that we can do to kind of make it a little bit better is what I'm looking for. Lighting would be limited to Tivoli style lighting. So I think Christmas lights that are strung above that tent, just to give it a little bit more light than what you get from the the sodium vapor that comes from the parking lot, which is just a little harsh. And then with regards to to kind of serving alcohol and making sure people are seated, that's one of the reasons we want to do this. We're actually not allowed by Dade County ordinance right now to serve anybody indoors or outdoors unless they are seated. And we've had it come up a few times. And we have some customers that come in from different counties and and we have to explain to them very nicely, you know, I'm sorry. Thanks for, thanks for grabbing a beverage and waiting for a table, but we have to get you into a seat in order to do that. So hopefully that helps touch on some of the concerns that you had.
Thank you.
Other board members, any questions, comments?
Oh, I have called one. Well, I think that's all Kevin, you guys have done a good job throughout this, like back to March, fish fries and pick up. So
Thank you.
I guess, thank you too, because personally, I mean, my family's gone down plenty of times to go pick up fish or whatnot. But I mean, I can literally see Lone Girl on my porch right now. And you know, you guys are a good neighbor. I don't think, you know, it is too crazy. I think this was inappropriate, you know, use of your space and I you guys do a good job of like, the music goes off at a certain time. And so I guess I don't really have a concern with that. I think the lighting is a good idea, you know. It's a good use of your space and I hope it can be flexible and also help you guys get the 2020s off.
Well, thank you.
Gary.
You know, I think Kevin's got a track record of being a, you know, good corporate citizen and has been flexible with any requests that, you know, that the villages had back to him on, you know, making changes. So, you know, I support this. I'm glad he got creative and I know he did a good job for us.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, Kristen, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. I support this. I've also been rethinking our dusk I ordinance or or limitation earlier, just because as dusk is getting earlier, earlier in the day, and I personally don't go out to eat until about seven o'clock and realizing I'm running out of options for outside places. But yeah, you've been a great corporate citizen and and whatever we can do to support.
Thank you.
Bill?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Can I make a couple of comments quick? Is that okay with you? Okay. Before tonight, I was looking through this, Brian just popped on the screen. Is that because I'm talking and you got nervous or what are we talking about? Okay.
No, I would, after you talk, I would just like to make a few comments regarding the previous resolution that was opted adopted, depending on what you all decide tonight.
Okay, thanks. So in in looking at all the plans and what Kevin wants to do, I appreciate all of it. With the exception of my concern is pedestrians within the drive through coming through, and we're going to have seating area that we're going to have waitresses and waiters going through to serve those folks. Do we, I mean, do we have something in place to make sure that those people are safe? That's first. And then second, from the music standpoint, I don't, I would hope that when we go over to those areas, because there's other businesses over there that are operating, maybe not, not as late, but they are operating. And if there was music that was louder, that could be impacting their businesses, we wouldn't want that to be affected as well. So maybe if you can address those two things for me, that'd be great.
It's a good point about the other businesses that are right there. I don't know exactly what to say other than to perhaps ask them, you know, if you want to put something into this wording that says if I if I get the approval of the other businesses that are there, that they don't mind the background music during events and, you know, whatever else. Then I would, I'd abide by whatever they're, you know, the majority would rule in our building at that point. With regard to safety, like clearly, we want to be safe with with people that are walking as they're heading east, right? They're going to be delivering food and beverages from from our building over to a location that's about 150 feet away. That it can get busy coming through 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 the driveway. We have cones out there right now that direct traffic, you know, kind of one way in either direction. It tends to slow people down a lot. We also have a stop sign that is by our curbside table that almost everybody stops at. It's funny what people will actually follow and what they won't. It's just a lone girl stop sign that's there. And they'll usually ask the kid that's standing there like, okay, we stopped, now what? And we're like, okay, well, you can go park if you want. We're just making sure that you don't need curb curbside. So perhaps even even something a little bit more strong than than just the lone girl stop here sign. And actually, we can make our own little stop sign. It's my goal to have somebody out there, honestly, again, as we kind of rethink and reimagine what we have to do to get through all of this. I'd like to have somebody out there that's that's stationed and ready to sell six packs out the cooler that we built there that just ready to go. So if somebody's always out there, it's part of their job is to kind of mind the traffic.
So if I could recommend then, within there, as it gets darker too, in the evenings, that's where our biggest concern is. Having a stop sign that may be a lit stop sign that's blinking.
Sure.
Might be helpful within there. You see cross crossing guards and security guards for the schools. That's generally what they have is a blinking sign, stop sign. People just tend to look at that and abide by it better than just a stop sign that they may say it's a lone girl stop sign and not not, as you just said, view it as a something I have to completely abide by. So I would suggest that. And again, I'm supportive. I just want to make sure that we don't open up a potentially negative situation. Somebody getting hurt or the other businesses. I think if you if you talk to the other businesses and they're good with it. Same thing with the neighbors. If there's any neighbors that are close by and close enough that they would hear that, please contact them as well. Sure that 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 everybody's good. And based on that, I'm ready for Phil to make his motion.
Yes, I have an ulterior motive. I like to eat and drink beer. I make a motion, we approve the requested temporary premise amendment for Lone Girl Brewing Company with the conditions agreed upon by the village board.
I think it actually, because Kristen put her hand up first, I'm going to give her, because you were all about the same time. So I'm going to go with Kristen. Does anybody else have any other comments? Please raise your hand if you do. Seeing that it's Caitlin, I'm going to call on her. Go ahead, Caitlin.
I just want to be clear on what the conditions are that the village board is approving. Are we approving the installation of temporary lights, the allowance of background noise and operating hours consistent with the rooftop?
Phil, is that your motion? You're muted.
Yes. In here, the hours of operation and temporary lighting and music is addressed. So yes, that would be part of it.
That would be my second.
Thank you for the clarification.
And then before and we go on, our village attorney would like to make a comment or two.
Well, just to, I also just want to clarify that the other two bullet points that Caitlin had identified in the memo regarding fire inspector review and the the ability to review and request changes by the village would also be the conditions that would be incorporated into the motion. And the other thing I would just say is I I think you certainly have the discretion to do every And the other thing I would just say is I I think you certainly have the discretion to do everything that the the motion and the second indicate tonight. I would recommend that at the next village board meeting, we bring that resolution back. That was approved last week. Because i- if we're if we're going to be approving certain things tonight that are arguably inconsistent with that resolution. I think that we need to bring that resolution back and take those bullet points out of the resolution. Because we need to treat, you know, similarly situated businesses the same way and we can't be in a position where we're approving this type of. Activity for lone girl, but then administratively denying it unless we have a good reason. And so I just, I just wanted to say, make the comment about those two additional bullet points as conditions and also bringing the other resolution back next week. Or for the next board meeting.
Okay, I I just have one question for you then, Brian, with regards to that. You can't leave yet. If they're asking for a liquor license, the liquor venue change, they have no choice but to come back in front of us. Is that correct?
They do, but there's also the potential that we would have a a separate business that would be seeking to get. Approval administrative approval under the resolution that was adopted last week. And if they're not seeking to serve alcohol. They would not need to come to village board for approval. And yet I think in light of what the village board may do tonight based on the motion. We would, the village staff administratively would need to be able to, for example, approve. Temporary lighting for a business that wants to operate outside under the resolution adopted last week. You know, there may be reasons why you wouldn't do it based on the location of the business, but. And I think the village staff would still have that approval or that that denial ability. But I don't think that we, you know, as the resolution is stated right now, it's it's a blatant prohibition on that. And I I don't think that we would want to do that. I think we would want to be able to look at it on a case by case basis, just like you're doing this tonight with this alcohol premises amendment.
Okay, so based on all of that, could we please have what this motion is actually going to state? We've kind of sporadic thing changed some things around in my opinion there. Can we, Caitlin, maybe you can read what it's going to state for us?
Sure. It does read approved requested temporary premise amendment for the lone girl brewing company with the conditions of. They may allow, they may install temporary lighting, amplified sound for background music is allowed. Operating hours of the temporary outdoor spaces consistent with the current approved rooftop out rooftop operation hours. Fire inspection review and approval of the final setup and plans prior to use and as caught at pause. The village has the right to review, request changes and or revoke the temporary dining areas.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Nyla, do you have a question?
Is there going to be, I I don't know if it needs to be connected or not, that he's going to contact other businesses and residents? To see that they're agreeable and that this music won't, you know.
Impact their business, yeah.
Right, right.
That's an okay thing to add as a, Brian, how would we add that to the motion now?
As long as the motion and the second are agreeable to adding that, I think that that effectively becomes part of the bullet point that's in. The staff memo addressing where it says amplified sound for background music and temporary dining areas. To me, there is, then there would be an addition there, subject to receiving permission from adjacent businesses and property owners.
Perfect. Nyla, is that good?
Thank you.
Phil, Kristen, are you good with that?
Good with that, especially since he's only staying on the property here and he's not going out on the village sidewalks or anything like that. So this is.
The only thing I would, the only thing I would clarify is when you say property owners. I think, you know, Kevin made the comment for those businesses as part of the cultist development. What 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 does property owners mean beyond that? I mean, does he have to go four blocks around him, which I would disagree with. I would think that we're talking about the businesses in the cultist building.
My comment was to those and when I asked the question was to those specific businesses right there that are right next to that premises or venue that he's going into.
And is that also then what what is meant by the, when I said property owners, my understanding is there are some residences that are that may be immediately adjacent. To where the, and if that's not the case, I guess there was a reference to wanting to. Make sure the property owners were okay with this and specifically residential property owners. Is there a defined group of. Streets or property or residential property owners that we have in mind?
I'm I'm not privy to that. What's back there, Styles by Dave, which is, I don't know what that's saying or what's happening with that exactly. But I think there might be a house back there, but I'm not sure. That's that's my point.
Here. I think there are three or four houses. Yeah, I'm sorry, Nyla.
Go ahead, Kristen.
I I think there are three or four houses back there. So are we asking that the homeowners in those houses also have to give permission? And not just the business owners are not just informed? Look, I'm looking up on Google Maps because I'm not actually sure.
I have Google Maps. There, I mean, there's three houses on South Madison Street. I Dave, that seems a little far to me. For the background sound.
I would think this all ties back to the, you know, original rooftop music. Limitations that Kevin's had and it's kind of followed throughout, you know, the last year or two, so.
Yeah, he's he's, he does have that right. The decibel meter he has to stay under for that. I was truly more concerned about the business that's going to be right there where the other people are next to you. So that that was my concern. So I'm actually good with it just being the commercial there. And I'm open to that. Nyla?
I would just like to say that, and he hasn't done a good job from what I what I understand. But I would like to say that if there's concern or complaints from the neighbors, then I I would. Like the board to be aware of it. And so, you know, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but just in case, I would like to be aware of any. Comments or concerns that may may arise. I don't think they will, but just in case.
Yeah, I believe Brian, you're you're moving around on my screen, but I I think we can modify this at any time, correct? If we have complaints? Or not? As it as it pertains to music?
I I think, yeah, I mean, I think to to, if if there were complaints by neighbors, I mean, honestly, I think the first step would. Step would probably be staff would probably want to sit down with 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 Mr. Evercrombie and and try to work through some issues with him.
Let me rephrase that question, actually. If he exceeds the decibel levels that are already approved?
Yeah, that, yes.
That type of complaint.
Yep.
Yes, then we could modify at that point.
Yep.
So I I don't, I don't see that happening in this case. So anyway, that those, any other comments? Raise your hands.
As the second into the motion, I'd agree with the businesses, but the, looking at the map, the homeowners, they're way over on Madison Street. So they're actually like much closer to the QuickTrip than they are to the other side of the block where Lone Girl is. And so I I'm, you know, just knowing how I get cranky as a homeowner, I would not want to subject this to. To somebody who's, you know, effectively a block away.
Okay, Brian, again?
So then I think it just, it sounds to me like when we talk about the amplified sound for back background music and getting approval. That is just from the other businesses in the Village Crossing Development?
Yes. Is everybody, yes? Phil, amendment to that, is it good? As part of your motion, is that good?
Fine, you're fine. I just.
Kristen?
Yep.
Okay, so the motions and seconds were made, comments are done. Okay, then I'll call the question. Roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Murray.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, everybody, very much. We look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you. Next, we have under new business, discuss and take, I'm sorry, discussion and update regarding COVID nineteen pandemic. Todd?
And we don't, we don't have Scott here from EMS to to fill us in. I've been forwarding both the public health as well as the Dane County. Emergency management updates to the board. So hopefully you're keeping tabs on that. Every department and Caitlin can attest to that here with me has been sort of jumping right into the changes as they're. As they're brought upon us, making changes on the fly for for our employees. Who are who are having in workplace, workplace matters as well as the people we're serving. So. There's not a lot of dramatic difference from a couple of weeks ago. Except that the masking policies in place and that that change obviously has taken. Taken place within the confines of our buildings. Caitlin, is there anything you want to add? If you if you were in Villa Tall anytime soon, you'd see that we're prepared to open back up to the public at some point. We've installed some plastic shields around all the workspaces, all the front desk counters. We've got baskets out at the, by the employee entrance with with thermometers and extra masks. So at least here in our building, we're doing those things and I know similar precautions are being taken at the other facilities.
I have nothing to add other than that as the HR manager for the village, I work with employees who either have symptoms. Or have direct exposures to COVID. So we work with employees on an ongoing basis on how they should be responding and communicating. With their department heads. So we just keep every week, just keep trucking along in our new environment. As as Todd said, sometimes things change. It seems like the changes come rapidly and then they're quiet for a little bit and then we have to prepare for some more changes. So we just keep rolling with the changes and being as flexible as an employer as we can be.
So I'm going to start actually as a board member. I usually don't. I usually wait for everybody else. I'm just going to start with this one. One, Todd, can you share with everybody how often the website is updated with the COVID updates?
Well, whenever somebody sends an update to me, which it's been, it's been maybe a week and a half now or so. But otherwise, I'll ask departments usually once a week to double check the site and and provide updates. And sometimes there's no update. So it it might look like it's been two weeks or so since it's been updated. But that's because the department's information is already accurate. But I'll usually send out a reminder once a week to all all department heads to check the info.
Then from from a, I don't want to call it complaint, but people asking why. As we've opened up soccer and various other things that are happening in the parks, we have no bathroom availability right now. Comments I've heard are other communities have the bathrooms open in their parks. Is there a way that we can potentially get that within COVID? Or are we being recommended by Dane County not to have our bathrooms open? Just throw that out there and.
And we we have, I I think it's a, I don't know if it's a majority, but certainly a portion of our bathrooms are open at the heaviest used parks. And I think the decision process was one made between Public Works and the Parks Department. And Recreation, just in terms of our ability to effectively keep open restrooms. As clean as we can. So it was more about resources, people, staff. To get in there and maintain the facilities to the extent that would be appropriate, should be open them. So the decision by the Parks and Public Works Departments was to open a portion of the restrooms at the most heavily used, heavily used parks. I I'm assuming that's something that the departments are looking at continuously as to whether changes could be made or should be made. But that's where things stand now, that it's a portion that are open.
So my comment to that, and and thank you for bringing that to Public Works and checking with them. To Nyla's, before Nyla was a board member here, she she had a big thing about getting soap into our park shelters or sure, not shelters, restrooms. One of the things that the CDC, everybody is telling us is that we need to wash our hands frequently. If we don't have any soap dispensers available in the parks and we have people congregating in them. I I I just think it's our duty to get that in there if we can.
Yeah, and they are. Thanks to Nyla's urging and and some others. When the restrooms closed in the fall of twenty nineteen, Bill Frederick started to investigate options. For putting those facilities, soap facilities back into the bathroom. So those that are open at least do have soap.
So my point is that those that aren't open in those parks don't have access to soap and water potentially to do the washing of their hands. That's that's my comment.
Oh, okay. I don't know for certain whether we've installed those in the ones that are still closed yet or not.
Okay, so if you can check into that for me, I'd appreciate it. Okay, other board board members, any other questions for Todd in regards to COVID? Please raise your hand.
Yeah, one question I have is I thought at one point when we brought the new library on. That it may end up being a polling place and who knows, everyone have mail in ballots or in person ballots, who knows? But in November. Do we plan on having the the library bottom online as a polling place or is it going to be the same as we've always done? Just curious how we're going to handle that.
Um, so good question, Gary. The intention was to bring the library onboard after the census and the next redistricting, which will be taking place in twenty twenty one. As we get closer to the November election, we can, if we need to, do a temporary polling place location change. That would actually come to the village board for your approval. As things have been going, I think like we have what we expected in April and what we're expecting in August. I think we're going to have a lot of absentee voters and not much foot traffic on Election Day at the Village Center. And it's actually nice, especially for November with the number of absentees, to have both polling locations in one building for Lori and I as staff. Who's helping troubleshoot. So and I think it might also be on top of everything that's very confusing this year for messaging. It might be a messaging issue to change one polling place, the library this suddenly, but it's definitely something that like if we are hearing that we're going to have huge turnouts. And the virus is still like this, it's something we can consider closer to the election and I'll be sure not hesitant to not do that kind of decision. But we were pretty successful in April of making one way traffics in the Village Center sanitizing. We had a good dry run in April for what it'll be like in November. So I'm confident that we can keep the polling places safe. And safe for all voters and workers, both in August and November. But if there's ever a doubt, we definitely can discuss changing a location.
Okay, any other board members with questions in regards to COVID? Please raise your hand. Phil?
Not a question, but a statement. At our last meeting, I told you about our drive through picnic we were going to have. It went off without a hitch. We served about two hundred and fifty meals. The seniors were really happy. The staff at the senior center were happy. In fact, we're gearing up to try to do it again next month and the month after. And if we have to, we'll serve them Thanksgiving dinner that way. It's, it was a great, great experience and we're looking forward to doing it again.
Thanks, Phil. Todd?
While we're talking, I got a text from Bill Frederick. He must be watching online or or someone, someone sent him a text. Gary's laughing. I have a feeling it might have been him. But Bill says all restrooms have soap dispensers now.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, if you can check with him to see if we can get those open or if if we have the manpower to keep them safe and clean. In addition to having those soap dispensers available, that would be great. So.
Okay, that, yeah, I'll check into that. That might be the type of thing that they might want to bring to a committee for discussion, but I will, I will mention it to them. I've got an email started. Yep.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then we move on. Discuss and take action on racism, tolerance and equality in the Wannakee community. Todd?
I want to start by providing an update on kind of what we've been, what we've been doing. It, we tend as an organization, hope to not be a reactive organization, but boy. The this, this has really been a time when we've been reacting to to what's happened around us. And and for for good reasons. But, you know, if anybody were to say, does the village have a plan? You know, what's our strategic plan on addressing racism and inclusion and equity? We're not there yet and we're we're still, we're still doing things. That are to to some extent new to us and we're jumping into areas that are, that are, that. Where we really haven't been before. And it's been good for our organization, but but it's definitely new. And what I did to help me get through this, I asked my department heads for some feedback on what they've been doing. And I sent an email out to the board just shortly before the meeting, because that's when I finished up the document. And I'd like to walk through that. Because without it, without a strategy and to say we've done X, Y, and Z, I just got to rattle off the list of stuff that we have been doing. And I'm, you know, I'm proud of the team here for kind of getting some things going. And I also want to admit though that we we still stand at the very tip of the iceberg. But I'm I'm glad we've gotten started. So let me just share my screen here. and show this for everyone. We can post this too. And I want to mention the title of this document is that if I can find it. PDF. There we go. Can everyone see it now? So I just sent this out a short time ago. But I think important, I want to point out that this is not a report on our efforts. This is just a progress report. This is, this is what we've done today. And again, tip of the iceberg type work. So I'm going to run through this. If you have questions, stop me. And I think I've captured most of the stuff that we've been doing to date. Again, still in draft form is that that statement, the working statement regarding racist incidents and intolerance. I think that's our view on that is evolving. We're as we're gaining more information, is it going to be a broad statement? It's going to be very specific to racist actions. I think those are sort of the things that we're grappling with. So calling that working is still accurate. We released an equity and inclusion survey on June 23rd that closes the end of this month. I'm going to do another push this week on our social media to invite participation, which has actually been quite high. We've got 420 total responses as of today. And as of today, we've also turned on the Spanish version. My apologies to our Spanish speakers in the community for not having that ready to go out of the gate. But when we repub, when we readvertise the survey, we're going to make sure that the link is there for the Spanish version as well. I've been working with a Facebook group that has been created specific to the Spanish speaking community along with the WNC. And they're also going to help promote this to the groups that they serve. We released our 2020 community survey this month, and that includes a number of questions pertaining to perceptions on inclusiveness and tolerance and the welcome welcomingness, if that's a word, of our community. There's also a Spanish version of that that's going to be available on the web. And we're working with the Spanish speaking community to promote that. That particular survey is a random sample of 1,700 households. So what we're going to be able to do with those particular questions is give a lot of validity to those responses. We'll have high confidence that that information will be accurate on the perceptions. The village board held a listening session on June 25th. The village board made it clear that that won't be the last that we hold on the subject. And and how many we hold down the road, I guess we'll see, but but it certainly won't be the last. The village staff held a roundtable on June 29th. It was a virtual meeting, about 25 participants from various village departments. And other staff were provided the recording. That again is the start of our efforts to continue communicating with staff. Number of research areas are underway. One is to look at what we can do to bring in more programs for all staff training. We've discussed this and Caitlin, as our HR manager, has discussed in his researching this too. We've learned what some other communities are doing and have talked with other municipal managers on some of our routine conversations with them. Tonight, right after this item, we'll have a proposal presented for you, the village board, to consider a program, a training program on social justice and race relations that will be of service to you as a board. So we'll be discussing that next. I've been actively participating with the Want to Talk Diversity Facebook group. I don't know if any of you, I know a couple of you have connected and followed what they're doing, but it's definitely been a a good place, a sounding board location for people to talk about what they're seeing, how they're feeling, what they hope to have happening. And I've been active with that and sharing thoughts back and forth along with when they've held, that group has held some Zoom meetings, just kind of open conversations and I've participated in those as well. Further, I've made some outreach to members of the community, sort of reached out as an ally to say, hey, I heard your concerns or I I see you're very active in the diversity work that's occurring now. Can we get to know each other a little bit to build a builds and relationships so we can work well together? And I've had some of those connections and that I've really enjoyed it. The Crete Wannakee Committee led by Erin, Erin Moran, initiated to be the Change Wall Project, and that certainly initiated some community conversations. I think it's eye opening is a good way to put it. But I think that's also important for our community to be seeing those discussions. The Crete Wannakee Committee is also starting in August, a series of videos called Wannakee is Home. That's going to be an interview series where they feature community members who have different backgrounds and but live here in Wannakee. And that's going to be held monthly beginning in August. And I expect you'll see that going on for perhaps years. Village staff is evaluating evaluating a proposal to participate in University of Wisconsin's program called University City. It's a partnership program where the university brings all of its departmental resources in areas of study to help a community or a group of communities with any topic or set of topics that are of concern or require research. In this case, I've suggested to University City, the potential for us to to do a collaboration entirely on the matters of race, inclusion, social justice and civility. And they were, they were really interested to potentially have UW partner with us with us on that. So that's, you know, I've had a couple of conversations where in the early stages of proposing that, which would be a school year's scope of work. Additional research is being done on how we can collaborate or look at community wide engagement and have the village kind of sponsor and support programs that would work to serve the entire community. One potential would be actually a proposal that I've already talked about with our presenters here coming up next about doing circle training and coordinating circle community conversations. Well, we could learn more about that later, or maybe maybe our presenters might even want to give us a sneak peek on of to what that might be about. But researching that, our library and the neighborhood connection and the Crete Wannakee Committee have also partnered on a essentially, it's kind of a book club or a virtual book discussion called Building Connections. It's on the book. So you want to talk about race. And that discussion session is this week, July 23rd. Last I saw there about 20 participants who had signed up and there's more room for people to participate. The library has really jumped in with their programming really well. Right away, they added relevant titles, hard copy and audiobooks. There's multiple book lists and resources regarding racial equity on a special page called Black Voices on the library Facebook page. I was in there today. It is a long, long list of resources sorted by population groups. So for for young adults or teens, youth as well as adult reading. They shared a Black Lives Matter reading room as part of our youth storytime series. There is multilingual, there was a multilingual storyteller event. Special events were promoted for Juneteenth. And then there's a special book club for high school students where graphic novels are being discussed about systemic racism and white privilege, sort of giving that population a tremendously safe place to talk about, to enter the discussion about these challenging issues. Our senior center is planning, as long as COVID allows, to show Just Mercy as a movie showing at the senior center. And then I won't read them all, but here's a list of, you know, when I asked all my my department has to tell me what what are they consuming and what is their staff consuming? Here's a list, not all inclusive, but talks about all the different programs, webinars, books, discussion groups that they've been a part of since since the George George Floyd murder. And I've done a number of these myself. Now, I do want to walk through some things with the police department because certainly there is a department that has, you know, seen seen a lot of attention following George Floyd. And certainly there's a lot of pursuits in policing to work at at modifying and being have a critical eye on the way in which we do our policing. So really proud of the work that our department has done frankly for years. But just recently, Chief Kreitzman tells us that the our patrol officers are scheduled for a five hour block on fair and impartial policing this month and next. Supervisors will be receiving a longer period of training. They're also looking at train the trainer programs. It's very common for departments to try to have in department expertise to to do some ongoing training for department as well as new recruits and bringing new officers up to speed. Multiple staff have done verbal de-escalation training, but that's been the case for years. We've been treating de-escalation. We've got a spot for one of our officers or a police department employee to participate in the DA's five week program called the 1619 Project sponsored by the New York Times. If you're not familiar with it, take a peek. It's really interesting. It's about the introduction of the slave trade in this country. And it goes to sort of paint a very clear and factual picture of of slavery in the United States, kind of maybe debunking some myths or giving truth and evidence to the the history of slavery here in our country. They've participated in the listening session that the village board or they watched the the listening session the board held as well as participated in the staff programming. And then they, along with other departments, will be a part of our all staff programming that we plan to implement. So that was quite a mouthful. And again, I'm proud of our team, but I am not afraid to say that we still stand at the very front, front end of our work here. Someone said to me the other day that this is a lifetime project. This isn't a season, a project for this season or a project for this year. But most certainly a project that will be a lifetime work. So that is, oh, a couple of things I missed. Both Chris and I wrote articles related to the subject that'll be coming out in the Horizon newsletter. That'll be later in August. And I think that's the, that's kind of the just happy to answer any questions or or interested in your advice or recommendations as we keep pursuing our work here.
Board members, questions or comments for Todd? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing, oh, Gary Hertzberg.
You know, I received an email from Linda Ashmore. You know, a nice email about, you know, the comment I made at the last meeting about, hey, you know what? Let's listen to the, you know, the people that live in Wannakee. And and she made the comment back to me that said, you know what? The people that go to the schools here come from Dane and Vienna and Springfield and Westport. And, you know, I, so I would like to, you know, go back to that comment and say, you know what? I think we need to include those communities in any kind of, you know, people that come to the village and speak. I want to include those people because they're part of a school district and I think we need to hear their comments and, you know, they're valuable valuable and useful and you know, they live here, shop here, do their business here. And so I'm glad that Linda sent that to me and I just wanted to kind of clear that.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Phil?
I, correct, Gary. I think we should listen to the people we serve first, but we should also listen to anybody with a good idea.
Okay. Anybody else? Kristin?
Yeah. So thanks, Todd, for putting all of this together. I know I've had conversations with people in the community who have watched the board meetings and are on some of the discussion boards online and have been doing their own work to organize and affect change in the community. And they're asking, well, what's going on with the village? What are we doing? So thank you for putting all of that together because I've known bits and pieces. Quite a bit few of the bits and pieces that are happening, but it's it's a, you know, it's a good list. And as you said, this is a lifelong process. We have, you know, going back to 1492, we have over 500 years of doing things one way that we've got to unravel. So I want to thank you very much for that and for for putting the muscle behind this and helping us make these changes.
Thanks, Kristin. Hey, Erin.
Yeah, um, just I'm glad most Crete Wannakee can be a good medium for a lot of these conversations and projects. I'm really excited that, you know, a lot of this stuff can take off. Some of these are the Wannakee's Home, but a video, like something that was one of our first ideas back in February, March. So it's really cool to see that working and, you know, partnerships we're creating. And then just reiterating what the library, on the library board and our meeting last week, we, you know, discussed this and set it as a continued goal for the next year. And they've been doing some awesome programming and resources, but I think more really good stuff comes. So thanks, Todd, for putting this together too. I agree with Kristin. Good to have it. We can show people progress.
Yeah. And jumping off your mention about Crete Wannakee, Erin, earlier today, it was in the consent agenda, so it just slipped right on through. But Joel Lewis is a resident of Westport. He's a black man. He's from his heritage goes to Trinidad and Tobago. And he was appointed to the Crete Wannakee Committee tonight. So I'm really excited to have Joel join us. And I know he's he's really interested in getting involved here too. But you might ask, okay, Westport resident on a Wannakee Committee. Yes, that's by design. The the Crete Wannakee Committee did indicate in its creation resolution that we could have up to two residents from within the school district, but not village residents. And that's kind of giving sort of acknowledging the talents that extend beyond our own, our own boundaries. So we're glad to have Joel with us now.
Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Erin. Nyla?
First of all, I'd like to thank Todd for all the work that he's done putting the list together. It's wonderful to see the accomplishments that Wannakee has done. We have a lot, a long road ahead of us. I also wanted to thank Gary for what he said. And I guess one thing that I'm learning with this whole process is that things take time. We need to be patient with each other and we need to understand and realize that we're all from not only different backgrounds, but we are also from different times. The time that I grew up, things were much different than they are now. People who are older than myself, yet, you know, they grew up in a different time. People who are younger have different perspectives than perhaps I do. I, I'm, I'm a work in progress and I just guess that we, we as a community need to be patient with each other. And sometimes it's very difficult to be patient because you just want to get things done. So thanks.
Thanks, Todd. I would, I mean, my only comment tonight is this, thank you, Todd, for putting that to get this together. But it shows that we are not just sitting on our hands and doing nothing, that we weren't just talking. We're looking and engaging all different avenues to come up with a great solution. And we probably will all not be here when it's finalized. As we said, it's a lifetime situation that we're going through. But I'll refer back to the name of our country is United States of America, about united. United with all, we're going to be great. Divided, we're not. And this is, we're working very hard right now to get united as a group of people. We're all people. So that's what I'll say. So thank you, Todd. And and we're just going to roll right from that into our discussion and take action on proposal from Antonio Hoy and Betsy Delzer for facilitating village board training related to social justice and race relations. Betsy reached out to me a couple of weeks ago. I'd say it was Betsy. Does that sound about right? And inquired and said, you know, maybe we could talk about this and she's got some ideas for us. And and I said, okay, let's move it on to Todd. He needs to be involved with this. And we're here tonight. Todd, do you have anything to add to that?
No, except I give Antonio and Betsy gold star for sitting through the first half of our meeting. So good work. That can be drudgery. But, you know, I just love to turn it over to them and have them lay out what they would like, they would like to propose doing with with all of you.
And awesome. Well, first of all, thank you so much for having us and creating a little bit of space for us to be on your agenda. I do know more about Lone Girl than I ever have before. So I'm grateful for that. And I also know now that Phil's a jokester, so I'm going to have to brush up my knock knock jokes if we if we do any more of this hanging out. So thank you. And yeah, what a great list and start that you compiled there, Todd. Happy to see us on that list. Very honored to be there. In particular, the work with the library, it's just really struck me as an educator. So thank you to those of you involved with that. So I'll just spend a moment introducing myself and then I'll hand it off to my work partner to introduce himself. My name's Betsy. I've lived here since 2002. I've been an educator in the Middleton Cross Plains School District since 2001. My name's Betsy. I've lived here since 2002. I've been an educator in the Middleton Cross Plains School District since 2001. And my area of expertise is really around racial justice education and awareness training. So, Antonio?
Hello, everybody. Let me first start by thanking you for the opportunity this evening and a chance to get to know the inside of Wanakee, just by listening to some of the things that I heard today. So, once again, thank you for the opportunity. And like Betsy said, definitely grateful to have us here today. I've been, I am a resident of Madison, going back now maybe thirty-plus years from St. Louis, Missouri. Been for quite a long time, and I continue to learn more and more every day, as I did today. And today, we'll be coming to you with an opportunity to talk about some work that Betsy and I have been able to put together over the last couple of years around racial justice, but with the intersection of heightened awareness around mindfulness and meditation.
So, we developed a curriculum for our school district, and that was initially the start, and it has since evolved and expanded. We've had the opportunity actually to speak nationally and internationally on this, what Antonio said, was sort of this intersection of heightened awareness.
I didn't really clarify, the school district is?
Middleton.
Middleton.
Yeah, thanks. So, the intersection of mindfulness and racial justice, and when we are talking about mindfulness, we're really talking about this kind of heightened awareness, okay? So, attention training and heightened awareness. And so, we do that, and in this capacity and way that we're kind of proposing to you, is in building some relationships with you as individuals, and then coming together in a circle format. So, the circle that we're referring to is actually something that we have been trained in from the International Institute of Restorative Practices. I'm a trainer and trainer through that organization, and it's really just like a curated conversation that has some scaffolding to build some meaningful learning and connection among the participants. The really cool thing is we can do any of it virtually. I would say six months ago, Antonio and I never would have said that out loud, but then you're, we find ourselves where we are, and then all of a sudden, life has translated. So, we are, we have spent some time talking, a lot of time talking to Todd, actually, and basically kind of created a proposal just for you. And tonight, I'm not going to like walk through all of it for a few reasons, but I want to give you just sort of the idea of what we might be doing. The first element is actually the idea of working with each of you individually. So, working with you in like a coaching session, we're both coaches. We both have a lot of experience in leadership development, and so that was what sort of drew us to you in the first place, was listening to your 6:25 listening session, and it was like, it just sort of ignited a lot of ideas and conversation among us. So, looking at actually being able to create relationships with each of you around identity work. That's where we begin. So, I want you to think, if you think of like a bullseye, we're going to start with your very personal identity work, move into some reflections around your family and kind of close community. And then beyond that, right, the layer beyond that, looking at our larger community and your sphere of influence as a leader. So, Antonio, do you want to talk a little bit about the coaching piece?
Sure. So, like Betsy mentioned, the opportunity to meet with you all individually gives us a chance to get to know one another, because something that is very important that is suggested that when you are having conversations, especially conversations where it's built around race, it's about building a community, and building a community amongst those that are the stakeholders that will be involved in this process. We think that it's important that we get a chance to get to know you as individuals, then that will allow us to work together more as a cohesive kind of group. As you get to know me more and more, hopefully, throughout, you know, this opportunity and in the future, you will always hear me reference to a community based on a family. And so, bringing in that family feel, bringing in those tough conversations, and I think it was Nyla that mentioned that everyone comes from different backgrounds, different walks of life, different eras in our present past history, and so when you think about that that group, when you think about that compilation of different people, different perspectives and different views and things like that, it's important that we create this sense of community so we can be able to have a sense of understanding and knowledge where each one of us will be coming from. And so, that's why when we think about the coaching sessions, having a one-on-one coaching sessions, like I said before, allow us to get to know one another, get to know the ins and outs of how we think and how we flow. Ultimately, when we come together as a group, when we move forward in some of this work, it definitely would allow us to move forward with a stronger sense of purpose by building that community within one another. And so, when you think about that, it's about getting us to work with our personal identity. And so, if some of you have already done some of this work, or this would be new, or opportunity for you to kind of jump into it now, is digging into your own personal identity, because how we identify and what's in our past, what's in our family, our family makeups and things, that is what transpired to how we view and what we see, how we think, how we respond. And when we start putting all those pieces together, we're putting, when we put them together, we're putting them together with a sense of challenging one another to think differently, to feel differently, and so we are trying to get into the minds and the hearts, and so I call this kind of work changing hearts and changing minds. Because if we can change hearts and minds of individuals, to me, I think that's how we get a chance to kind of move the community forward. And something that I kind of put together for myself is that to accomplish any sort of change in a community, we must begin with the individuals within the community. So, when you're trying to, when you're thinking about doing this work, and you're thinking about the broader community, you're thinking about for the people who you all serve and work for, that's our goal, but in order to get to that goal, we have to do the work ourselves as the individuals, and we also have to be able to serve the individuals within our community, to have our community move together in a holistic kind of way of thinking about it. So, that's just a little bit more about our opportunity when it comes to our one-on-one coaching, and it can go a variety of different ways. And the last thing I will say, then I'll pass back over to Betsy, is that ultimately, once again, this may sound kind of crazy, but we would not be teaching you anything that you already don't possess. Everything you have as an individual that you need to move forward to do the work, you already have within you. What we try to do is just bring it to the surface, bring it out into the air, and you will ultimately take you where you want to go. So, once again, everything you need, you already own. You already have it within you. Our goal is to try to help bring it to the surface and to help just move it forward.
Yeah, thank you. So, after the coaching sessions, after we spend some time with you individually, and we're thinking that it'll probably take, based on the numbers, that will probably span over a couple of weeks, then we'll come back together and actually create that scaffolding of the questions for the circle that you'll have in advance. So, you'll have some time to do some reflection, consideration before we come together, and then if we're in this scene and we're virtual, then we will host that way. If we happen to be able to be together, which is probably not for a while, we would still be filming this for the public. And that's really why we really wanted to create that space where we could share with you prior to just the fishbowl experience, because it does create a level of vulnerability around this tender nature of this work. When Antonio was talking about you already having this in you and your life story and your worldview, all of that, like we use tools that we've been trained in to just allow that to emerge, right? So, we use the tools of our inquiry to allow that to emerge. And really, as a group, you're learning about yourself, but you're learning about each other, and we are fascinated and super inspired by helping teams function optimally together. So, you're making decisions and you're leading the way for many people in this community. And how do we bring you together through this learning and reflection to help even your team the nature of it and your own connection among each other, right? So, Todd made a short mention of this concept of another proposal out there, is that I'm so excited about building capacity within our community. So, looking at a very large circle keeper training or circle facilitator training, where we tap on these brilliant minds, and they'll want to talk diversity group, and really open it up and allow people to gain the skills that we have of leading these conversations, and then potentially having a set or series of conversations where the same small group of five to eight people come together monthly for the next nine months or a year, to just continue the really like excavation and discovery process. So, we're just looking at the coaching sessions and then two circles for our group as a board. And that is the proposal that we put together, and the reason I didn't share my screen is because I knew Antonio would be able to co-host this with me and share, but I would love to open it up to questions, or Todd, if I missed anything, or if we missed anything that you were hoping that we touched on?
Perfect. Thanks, Betsy. Todd, do you have anything you'd like to add before the board members get questions?
Nope, I'm glad it's here in front of the board, because I definitely want this to be of service to the seven of you. So, like to get your feedback and input on the direction we go with it.
Okay, feedback inputs. Please raise your hand if you have comment. It's always slow. Somebody's going to put it up, so let's just see who's going to be the first. Phil?
As the youngest person in the room, I'll start. I think this is great. Back in, when I was in retail and in our restaurants, we invite people from the outside to look at us from a different light. So, if, you know, I keep seeing myself from my own eyes and from the people I'm with all the time, it would be probably pretty beneficial to see myself from someone else's eyes.
Okay, so I'm going to raise my hand. Phil, I think Kristin brought up 1419, and I was looking at you when she said that. So, I don't know if that is rude to say. I'm teasing, of course.
No, I was bored just after the boat came in.
Okay, so.
I would like Antonio's audio on, so I can actually hear how loud he's laughing.
Okay, other board members, questions, comments? Kristin?
Yeah, so I'm excited for this. I work at UW Extension, and we're doing a lot of discussions and meetings around this, and we keep talking about the need to interrogate your own beliefs and your own experience, and I keep waiting for somebody to say, and here's how you do it. And certainly, I've done a little bit of that through my own self-learning, but the coaching, I'm really looking forward to, because it's a heavy lift to understand your own preconceptions and biases and how your own experiences are playing into this larger world that we've, you know, we've inherited and we're perpetuating and creating. So, very much looking forward to it and really excited for what you've been talking about tonight. So, thank you, Betsy and Antonio.
Nyla?
I would say I think this will be very educational and very eye-opening. I have spent most of my adult life self-employed in my home. I work with families on a very small level, as far as, you know, it's two or three families at a time that I do childcare for. So, I think this will be a big eye-opener, and unlike Kristin, who has lots of experience out there with the public, actually, I've probably lived a pretty sheltered life, so you could have your way with me, you guys, and probably teach me a lot.
Say hi to Vaughn for us, Nyla. I see he's grabbing dinner back there.
Yes, he is. He just got home.
Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, Chris, I like this. I like the whole concept of this, because I've gone through diversity training, like I said before, probably ten or fifteen years with AT&amp;T over the years, and it was always an online one-hour session, and you, you know, completed it, and it was great, but I like the idea of having just a one-on-one session and actually spend some time to get to know some people, and I just think you'll get a better view of where we're at, understand the issue better. I just like the whole concept, so I think it's a good idea.
Erin, any comments?
I think this is a great idea. I'm on board. I'm excited, and yeah, I think it's a good commitment to our community and good starting point to help us be better leaders, especially in this space.
Okay, thank you. So, my comments, really, other than the Phil comment, and Phil, I'm glad you're a good sport always with my comments to you. We, as a board, and I've been doing this, it'll be fourteen, thirteen years, thirteen years here at the end of this year, look at how can we invest in our community and how can we use our taxpayer dollars to improve our community always, whether it be with our parks, our libraries, our village centers, our police, our fire, all the different things that we talk about all the time. This is one of those things that we can invest right into our people for all of us, to become better people and a better community. So, I can't think of a better way for us to get started with this and lead to get going, you know, within this program. So, I am going to make the motion to, I'm going to find my motion first before I state it. Move to approve the proposal from Antonio Hoy. I'm saying that right, correct, Antonio? And Betsy Delzer? For facilitating village board training related to social justice and race relationship. Do I have a second? Second, by Nyla Frye. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Can I say something? Or do you have to do, go do something official right now?
The chair. Usually, we don't have you talk anymore, that I would take comments from the board members. Do you have something that's going to be different from our motion that we stated?
No.
You think we should add? All right, then I'm going to take our motion, and you can send all of us an email or questions if you'd like afterwards. That way, we won't break any rules or violations here. Okay, perfect. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Kristin Rungy.
Yes.
Chris Ener.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Phil, you're muted.
Yes, yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, I will say thank you to both of you for being here tonight. Betsy, I will give you a word right now if you'd like, just to make any other comments.
Oh, no, I was totally just going to, like, be grateful and say thanks and goodbye, and also, before we see you again, just give you the opportunity to really think about the questions that you want to ask, because that's one of the things that we're going to be doing in our coaching session, and more information coming with all of that, but it was just more so, my heart was like overflowing with gratitude, and I was like, oh, there are rules here. So, anyway, thank you, and.
You're stopping one of the most important votes of the night, right now, so you know. Who has that motion?
I move for adjournment.
Motion by Phil.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, please. Caitlin?
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristin Rungy.
Yes.
Chris Ener.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everybody, for tonight's meeting. Well done, and to Betsy and Antonio, thank you again. I'm sure you'll be able to hear it from you soon, and you'll be working with, I'm assuming Todd, to get everything moving forward. So, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.